Raise for the plans of the United States.
The plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alexander.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Cuman.
Yes.
Luntine.
Here.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
I entertain the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Sure.
Alexander.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Cuman.
Yes.
Luntine.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Roach.
Yes, yeah, I would like to introduce and welcome aboard our new Recreation Director, Jessica Giff. She is our, is a recreational professional with seven years of program development and management expertise. Her past experience has been with the Cleveland Skating Club and with the Destination Hotels and Resorts. She has joined us yesterday and has already contributed to moving the city's recreation activities forward. So that completes my report and we're glad to answer questions as we go along.
You're welcome. Glad to have you. I'm sure everybody is. It's been a while. We'll move to the Fire Chief Mark Newman's report.
Thank you, Council President Henry, Mayor Roach, and members of council. Some statistics on our fire department year-to-date. As of April 30th, our total calls have been 627. We're averaging 5.2 calls for service each shift. Our call volume is down 3.4 percent compared to last, the same reporting period in 2014. Our EMS calls are at 490, that's 78.1 percent of all calls, and our three-area nursing homes account for 21 percent or 131 calls of the total call volume. Our fire service calls are at 137. We've had seven structured fires. Simultaneous calls are at 13 percent. Those are calls that occur at the same time. We've had 82. Mutual aid, we've received mutual aid 14 times. We've given mutual aid 39 times. Billing for EMS transports is at $218,000. That's an increase of 3.9 percent compared to the same reporting period in 2014. We were at $209,000. Revenues for EMS transports are at $100,000. That's a decrease of 15 percent over the same reporting period in 2014. We were at $118,000. A lot of this is due to the catch-up, UH's having, or we're transitioning to a new EMS reporting system called Sanzio, and the revenues are lagging a little bit behind, but we've been recovering about 3 to 4 percent a month. So that's, that's still catching up. Our year-to-date overtime in 2015 is at $24,873. That's a decrease of 52.23 percent over the same reporting period last year. We were at $52,000 last year. Overtime includes shift coverage, off-duty training related to regional agreements like our Hillcrest Technical Rescue Team. Our year-to-date supplemental staffing, that's when you factor overtime and part-time together, is at $30,396. In fiscal year '14, it was at $63,973. That's a decrease of 52.49 percent. There's a CPR course scheduled for Monday, June 22nd. A hard saver CPR course will be held at Richmond Heights Fire Station on Monday, June 22nd from 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM. Division of Fire in partnership with UH Richmond Medical Centers offers bimonthly CPR courses to the residents of Richmond Heights. In this class, the students learn how to provide CPR and use an automatic external defibrillator as well as how to relieve choking in an adult. Anybody who is interested can call me at (216) 383-6304. Class size is limited to 12 students per class. These classes are free to residents of Richmond Heights. As council may recall, the Insurance Services Office came in and conducted a survey of our fire department and our city. We were visited by a representative from the Insurance Services Office, which is known as ISO, on March 11th. And ISO, they grade fire departments throughout the country and they assign what's called a Public Protection Classification, or PPC. It's a level of 1 through 10, with 1 being the very best. There's only one department in the state of Ohio that has a 1, 1 for 1. And 10 is obviously not so good. ISO looks at several factors, including emergency communications, fire department, and water supply. Commercial and homeowners' fire insurance rates are based on the final classification. I am proud to announce that Richmond Heights has received a rating classification of 3. Formerly, we were a 4. We've gotten better. We are one of only 184 fire departments, or 6 percent, in the state of Ohio to have this rating. We've improved. This rating was only possible with the support and commitment from Mayor Roach, City Council, and all members of the Division of Fire and our Police Department. So this is a significant achievement where our score has actually gone up. I also put in all members of council's mailboxes an overview of the report from ISO in its entirety, as well as my comments. Just so everybody in the community knows, the firefighters have began the testing, the annual testing of fire hydrants. They began on Monday, May 4. We conduct the annual inspections to ensure that the hydrants we depend on for extinguishing fires are operational, provide proper water flow, maintain adequate system pressure. NFPA standards also call for all public fire hydrants to be inspected on a regular basis. Should any of our citizens notice fire personnel checking hydrants in the area, be assured our intentions are not to waste water or destroy property. We are working to ensure safety of the community. And should any of our citizens notice a hydrant in need of repair, please call the Division of Fire or the Service Department so we can initiate the repairs through a work order with Cleveland Water. And my last comment would be I encourage all of our citizens in the community to log on to our website and register with Ready Notify so they can stay informed for incidents in our community. And that concludes my reports, and I'll take any questions if anybody has them.
Yes, we do have one. I think before you said that we should probably call our home insurance provider and let them know that our rating has improved.
Yes. Yes, and actually, this new rating, it takes effect on August 1st, 2015. ISO generally rates a community every 10 to 15 years. We had not been rated since 1998. And the homeowners just simply need to contact their insurance companies, inform them of the PPC change, and the insurance company will do the rest. And not only for our residents, but for our business community as well. They also use the ISO rating to underwrite business insurance as well.
You're saying the report doesn't really affect until August 1st. Does that mean you're not allowed to report it? Would it be nice to do a press release, is it on the website?
All of our neighboring communities have reported it in the media, so it, that is our new classification. The effective date is August 1st, so it's open for general release, and it is something to be proud of.
I'll draft a press release, hold it for you, and send it off.
Thank you, sir. Be glad to work on that.
Great, thank you.
We probably should add that to our report.
We should. That's good news.
Especially about the insurance. It's a great place for that.
I actually have something drafted already too, so.
Any more good news for us, Chief?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to Police Chief Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Mayor Roach, members of council, and, oh, sorry. Just a few comments about police activity to this point this year. Our apartment crimes are up 11 percent. That's mainly due to a increase in larceny thefts. They're up about 35 percent, but the good news is burglaries are down 84 percent. We've had three more robberies this year, but two of those were shoplifters at Macy's that pushed or assaulted the loss prevention people. So anytime forces used that theft becomes a robbery. Our calls for service are almost exactly the same as this time last year. Our arrests are up 10 percent. Our CAD entries, which is the most accurate measure of all of the police activities, is at 10,723. Our traffic enforcement is up 3.5 percent. The fines from Lynnhurst Court are up 29.6 percent as of the end of March. Overtime is down almost 3 percent from the same time last year. The mall accounted for 5.8 percent of our total calls and 17 percent of our arrests. And the three apartment complexes, Dorchester, Loganberry, and Richmond Park, account for 19.4 percent of our calls for service. I also wanted to mention that we've been working with, I'm sure everybody knows Colonel Carter. He's a member of a motorcycle club called the Buffalo Soldiers. And they did a community program, their Toledo chapter did a community program in the Toledo area, Lucas County, called What to Do If You're Stopped By the Police. And though that was, that was the title of it, there were a number of things that was included in that forum. Essentially, they had a panel of law enforcement, attorneys, and they just basically presented what you can do and what you shouldn't do if you have contact with the police. So Colonel Carter proposed doing something like that for our community, so we are in the process of working on that. We talked to the school, because we wanted to do something in the school as well, and the superintendent felt that a little different approach might work better with the students. So we're probably going to do a program, well, we will do a program at the schools and we'll want to do another one for the community, but the focus of the one at the school will be just a little bit different. But so far, we have, the ACLU is participating, a representative from the Highway Patrol, from the Chuyer County Sheriff's Department, the FBI, and of course us, and the school. And the date is going to be, for the school event, will be Tuesday, May 26th. We'll be doing 7th, 8th, and 9th grade from 11 to 12, and 10th and 11th from 12 to 1. The seniors will already be out of school by the time we're able to do it. So we're supposed to have one more meeting to kind of settle exactly how we're going to approach it and pretty much who's going to address what area, but I think it's going to be a good, a good idea. We had some students from the school at our last meeting, last Thursday, and they gave us some good input as well. And some encouraging remarks about how they felt about their interacting with our Police Department to this point. So I think, I think it'll be beneficial both for the school and when we get an opportunity to do a community event in general. And I think, I think a lot of, I think it's obviously important considering the things that have happened in the last six months, but I think it's, it gives law enforcement a good opportunity to explain to people why it is that we do the things that we do. And I think that misunderstanding, perhaps on both sides, is what creates tension that's really unnecessary. We're out there trying to protect everybody, and, and the people need to realize that that's our main function, not, we don't respond to calls with the intent of arresting anybody. We really don't want to do that. And the only other thing I have is when we have a prisoner that gets sentenced, usually under the state code, they'll be sentenced to 30 days or more, and obviously, we can't hold them in our jail because our jail's a 12-day facility. So we were, we did have a contract with Bedford Heights City Jail, that's a full-service jail, and we would take the prisoners there. Bedford Heights announced that they're going to be closing their jail to outside communities. So we'll be talking to the county to see if there's another avenue that we can look at, not only for our prisoners, but there are some smaller communities that have been utilizing Bedford Heights for all of their prisoners. In our area, Gates Mills and Mayfield Village both. So they need someplace to take them now.
So you're saying as a joint effort, you're going to pursue the county? Is that what you're saying?
There's, yeah, we really don't have much choice. There's, at least on, the only other full-service jail on the east side that I'm aware of is Solon. And we did have a contract with them at one point in the, in the event that there were no beds in Bedford Heights. What happened with Bedford Heights is the county didn't have enough jail space, so when you had prisoners that were sentenced under state code, they became the county's responsibility. Since the county jail didn't have room, they were paying Bedford Heights to house those, those county prisoners. Well, since the county took over the Euclid jail, they don't need the Bedford Heights space. So Bedford Heights, the jail's losing about a half a million dollars a year. So I know they were hurting, and last year they didn't pick up this year at all, so I guess they've just decided to close it down. So I will keep you.
When is that effective?
August 1st. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Very interesting. Building Commissioner Phil Sebo.
Thank you, Council President Henry, Mayor Roach, and members of council. In the line of a very brief report, our activity in the Building Department as of late has been centered around landscape maintenance, as you may have expected. Over the last two weeks, we've sent out more than 100 grass violation notices, and we'll probably start being in a position to cut grass using our contractors that were taking, that are going to take part in our program this year. By sometime at the beginning or middle of next week, we're still finalizing a contract with the, the two contractors that we're going to use, and they, that should be in place within the next couple of days. I can say that if, if any member of councils, if any member of council or any of our residents know of a property where they believe that the grass or the landscaping is in violation, they can call the Building Department, and we have an up-to-date roster of all of the properties for which notices have been sent. We can check that roster very quickly, and if the property isn't on there, we'll be happy to send a notice on that property. So that's what the status of our landscape program is to the, to moment. As I said in the council of the whole, we will have a Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night. One of the topics is the status of the Hilltop Plaza and the, some of the other stores in the Wilson Mills and Richmond Road Shopping District. The following Wednesday, May 20th, there will be a zoning board of appeals hearing regarding the property currently occupied by the Marathon Gas Station at the corner of Richmond Road and Highland Road. The current owner of that property is planning to tear down the building and gas canopy and construct brand-new ones on the site. And finally, the, on the issue of school door barricading, the next public hearing for that matter is in Columbus again on the morning of June 5th, and I'll be attending that meeting, that hearing, and then reporting back to council on its, on its minutes. And that's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Can I ask Director Ms. McHale?
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Roach, members of council. I just have an update on one item tonight, and that relates to the process of filling the accounts payable position. We did have an interview last Tuesday with a very promising candidate. We tentatively, the last communication I had as far as scheduling other interviews was, was late last week, so I don't know for certain what date, but we're looking at bringing in one or two more individuals sometime this week. Last that I had spoken about it, we were talking about Thursday. So hopefully, we will be able to get through the interview process fairly quickly and identify the candidate for the position and move forward. So that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. We're going to Service Department Director Donald Krasinski.
Madam President, today I received an email from the state on our summer salt and price. It was at 82 dollars a ton. And the winter salt paperwork, we won't be able to gather up summer supply, summer supply maybe. And whatever we ask for, we have to at least get 90 percent. The other thing I'd like to let you know is, out of the baseball season so far, we've only had two days canceled of volleyball games that we wanted to play. And that was two days that we actually had rain and snow going on. Two days straight with some rain and shine. But every weekend so far, they've been playing tournaments for a living, or we've got a lot of food, feedback for other series. And we're hoping this will be the first step in what happens here.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to also thank you for your service on the ball damage. My grandsons were participating in the tournament this weekend, and the fields were in tip-top shape as far as I was concerned. One little problem, the restrooms weren't, weren't open on time. And for little guys, and, and older guys, we need those, we, we need those facilities ready, and I'm sure it's been taken care of. But the fields have looked much, much better.
So who is responsible for doing that? Is that, I mean, who used to?
The restrooms.
Restroom.
The guys that we have doing the field, it's their responsibility, but the general nurse doing it right now, it's never done to us before. I've been training him up here, he's been doing it. He's kind of getting his feet flattered during the door there. At the same time, we were also opening up the lodge, and that was something different on schedule as well, so we have it posted, and I'm following in mind. He's catching on, how is that working?
I was just sort of thinking, because I was thinking those roles were probably somewhere else, and it's always been an issue about what time are we opening the laboratories in Richmond Heights, so.
Seven o'clock in the morning would be just there.
Wow, that's interesting.
Another question, and I don't know if it's for you, Don, or if it's for Mr. Courtney. I brought up last week that we had a problem with the road signs off of Highland Road. Kerry J is called Kerry J Road, which is really supposed to be a boulevard, and Dumbarton Boulevard is supposed to be Dumbarton Road. Lee, I guess you were going to possibly look into that, or to see if that was a...
Dumbarton is a boulevard. We asked, we put a double sign over the Dumbarton sign because the government is interested in that.
And the Kerry...
We need one of their...
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. C.
Could we go back and revisit the pricing for salt? Typically, we paid between $40 and $50 for salt. Did you say this is for our summer allocation? How many times do you think we'll be buying it in the summer?
I think it was a thousand. Then we fill up our, then we fill up our salt.
Are we budgeting for that kind of an increase in salt, or?
A little bit. We'll have some money left over, over into the winter product, and that's where we go with that. Whatever I put down for, say it's 500, I think we go with 20 percent over there. So I do have a little bit of leeway, and it's kind of, it's a good thing.
Can we explain why the, the price went up? Does anybody know, or? I can't believe it's a shortage of salt, because...
Supply and demand, and maybe just they have a, you know, two companies have referred to me. And what I can do is, I know, I think you've heard of all counties and all the cities, and everybody has a little different prices, but in Chiaganda, Gianga, like, I think they were all in one line. I think we can test it better than the other state. I think we can print out everyone else's name as well.
It reeks of price fixing, in my opinion. No question.
It's not fair, and it's way cheaper. But we're, we're, we don't have a choice in America. Was 100% service a, in this contract?
I, I would hope, if you could distribute that information to council, I would be interested in, I don't know if that's something we can run up to Flagpole down in the state or somewhere, because that's an unfair jump in price from what we paid last year.
This is the guest case, that'll be the same, the time we take, the cost, and the choice, and the decision we made.
Well, if we sit by and do nothing.
Exactly.
It will, we'll, we'll just be taken advantage of, so. Something needs to be done. At least we need to speak out, and I guess by bringing it up in this meeting, we are speaking out too soon. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. That's all. Well, that was a lot, right there.
Sorry.
$82 a ton is a lot. Thank you very much. We'll move on to City Engineer Lee Courtney.
Two items, Madam President.
I'm sorry, Jessica's beside you. I guess we can go to her. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Would you like to report anything? Okay.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, Council, and audience members. As the new Recreation Director, I am very excited about joining the city of Richmond Heights, and would like to thank you all for this privileged opportunity to serve the community. With this being my first official week of work, I have a few items to report on. The city hosted the successful shred day this past Saturday on May 9th. That was well-received from the community as a whole, as well as the co-ed softball league, which ended up with five teams in total. It's continued to play their Sunday night league play, which is going well for all the teams. Also, our amateur sports league has begun their season play for the year, and I have also heard several positive reports on the conditions in the field, so maybe for Service Department, beyond all the work they've done. Finally, I have begun the beginning stages of putting a plan together for the Memorial Day celebration, scheduled for Monday, May 25th at 10:00 AM. And this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
So do you have a question?
Yes.
What, what do you have in mind for the Memorial Day celebrations? Something I have on my event calendar? If I can add it to the website for the team to do it.
At this point, we've just made a few phone calls trying to put something together. In the past, what I believe has been done is there's been a service, memorial service done, and then there is some donuts, some coffee, and some fruit and things followed up after that, where anyone's attended. And so at this point, we're just trying to kind of get someone to come in, a group come in at this point to actually give the service. So we put a few phone calls out, we're trying to get that together.
In the past, it's always been American Legion's that's done that thing. So I think is what Jessica's doing is trying to pick up the pieces. So I think it's what Jessica's doing is trying to pick up pieces from that organization and still make sure that that happens.
Did we always do it about on this day?
Yes, well, this is the official Monday is Memorial Day, so everybody's on the poll of the grid, basically.
I knew I attended, and it's something that I said, how do I attend? That was all, that's why, okay. All right, it's usually a nice ceremony.
Traditionally, we'll pick up, similar to what we've done the past years, and hopefully we'll have a few more, and some other things.
And we've actually reached out to Colonel Carter as well.
Oh, that's good. Sounds good.
And that'd be happening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Courtney, thank you.
Two items, Madam President. First, continuing with the Highland Road theme, we do not have a date yet when the county will begin to put the permanent pavement markings on. We get established, when they do it, they'll do all four crosswalks, and then we will pick up the other three lights when the turnouts and things along. The second item is, last year, we repaved the entry drive to Sand Park and the drive out here going back to the school. That contract will be in the report too, on recent work along the edges where we've got a little drop off a little bit. If you see work out there, it's per plan.
Thank you. We'll move on to Economic Development Director Crystal Best.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor, members of council. My report is going to be very brief, because we're all really excited. We just got the last few changes to the YMCA contract, and though everybody's eager to see that, we just have a little outstanding question about the insurance, and I think our risk management people and the wise management people are looking into that, and we should be able to sign it, or not be, but the mayor should be able to sign it in a very short quarter. The YMCA is really excited to be participating, and they are already working on getting programming together and activities and a student team that will be within the region, so I think it's going to be a wonderful asset, and I know Jessica and I have already been talking at, after this weekend, it's probably, not probably, it'll pass on to her, and I'm looking forward to a really great summer, having the school up, it's going to be a really good asset for you. Just some economic development, development. I stopped in and spoke with Brian at La Tamairea yesterday, and he told me that Yelp, La Tamairea was voted best Mexican restaurant in greater Cleveland. I tried to find it, I'm going to ask him to send me the link, but that's a really great plug for us and for our city. I mean, it could almost be like, if you get people from there, and I think they do, you know, foodies around Cleveland, make it a destination, and maybe try to get some momentum going from that. So if I can figure out, if I can't figure out how to find it, I will call him and have him send us the information, so there's less of a stress about it, and I'll get it to you there. So kudos to him, and please do stop in and include delicious items. So I wanted to let you know that. Also, from a economic development standpoint, or just community development, I know a building official was talking about tall grass. I've been getting phone calls about building maintenance loans that might be available. So last year, I talked about the HELP loan, which is a low-interest rate loan that we get through a bank that participates, third federal, kind of a state bank, or the other one. You can borrow up to two hundred thousand dollars, and the minimum you can borrow is three thousand dollars. And it's a good product to help people who want to do some home improvement and, you know, with also the H R O T loan, which is a loan that is funded through HUD, and we have to meet eligibility requirements. But these two products are two products that I've been telling people about, and they will call me. So I think it would be good, maybe we can do a little blurb of the condition, or maybe put something on the website, hey, it's springtime, get your houses greased up, here's the possible resources that are available. It's not, these aren't dollars from Richmond Heights, they're dollars either through the county or through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So I'll keep pushing that out there so that you can keep your houses going there. And last but not least, Harvest for Hunger. The city of Richmond Heights is doing a Harvest for Hunger campaign in collaboration with the Creator Food and Food Bank, and I have my cans up here and my box here. Our campaign runs through May twenty-second, so if anyone wants to stop in and pop off some canned goods, that would be great. Our goal is five hundred dollars, and so far, we've raised two hundred and seventy with a pledge from the Kiwanis as well, so we're working on that. I have some flyers, and this coming Sunday is going to be a really fun event. It's a community, it's communities coming together to do a Zumba fundraiser for Harvest for Hunger. We're asking for canned food donations that value about ten dollars, or whatever you can afford to spend. But what's exciting about it is, we have our own Cindy, who teaches Zumba at Kiwanis Lodge, she does, she does senior class, and I teach golf, and we're doing some Aqua Zumba in summer. And we have Jason Plus, our own firefighter, who in Richmond Heights also is a Zumba instructor who knew. And he's going to be one of the instructors, and, and I will be, if I can get my knee, I've been resting my knee, I'm going to be one of the instructors. And then one other instructor who is not related, but is from Richmond Heights, who is very good in front of my name, is Cole. So it's from twelve-thirty until two, please take the flyers, call friends, come, support it, it will be a really fun event, great community event. So that's this coming Sunday from twelve-thirty until two.
Madam President?
Yes.
As the director has commented, she talked about Kiwanis wanting to make a contribution. As many of us know, Kiwanis is the oldest civic organization in Richmond Heights. We're very proud of it. Our own mayor is our current president. I'm a member of the club, and we do a lot of great things. Some of the things that we do for the city have been handicap ramps. We actually built the sign out front of the old city hall, the information structure there was built. Also, the little bridge that goes across the creek by the school. Many, many other projects at the football field with the school. We made donations to the fire department, police department in the past, and also to the city. So at this time, I would like to present this check from the Richmond Heights Kiwanis Club, in the amount of a hundred dollars for Harvest for Hunger.
Whoa. Wow, this is awesome. Thank you, I wasn't expecting this. Thank you, Kiwanis Club, this is great for now, our total is three hundred and seventy dollars. So how long do you have now to get your monies together?
Till the twenty-second. And it doesn't have to just be money, it can be canned goods as well. So we have to wait twenty-second, and I know what they're making.
They take money and canned goods?
Money and, yes, better still. And the mayor asked, can you come to the Zumba event and not participate? And I said, yes, as long as you pay, come sit and watch.
I think the mayor should have to participate.
You might want to ask those people, what are they going to be doing when everybody else is exercising?
Right. I think, I think the people would pay to see the mayor do that.
Yeah, we want to see the mayor.
Okay, okay, come at twelve-thirty. Don't be late.
I think we should have our fire representative there.
Thank you. I have a question. How did you shred it, Django? We were up there, and we saw, it looked like it was successful.
Oh, my goodness. What was it, we shredded six thousand pounds?
They filled the truck, they, we came to about ten minutes or twelve, and the truck was full, and we were stuffing paper in the truck, as much as it could take. So we filled the truck, I think it's almost, I don't know, eight tons, give or take. We had forty cars in the row at the opening time at nine o'clock, and it was consistent, I think pretty much consistent all morning, just like one car right after the other. And so, very, very successful.
It was really well received, it was perfect weather for it, and people, it went really smoothly, Anthony did a phenomenal job organizing, partners, everything, directing everyone.
Did you say how much we collected at?
At the shredding?
Yeah, shredding.
For our, two hundred and seventy dollars.
So we collected that much money there, and some things of Cambridge, so.
Yes, she was, she wouldn't let them go through unless they gave some money. As I walked over, I was like, oh, what's it all about? Even I got shook down our feet.
There was a lot, there was a lot of twenty-dollar bill, can you make a change? We did, we did.
The answer is always no, you can't.
Well, she was-
And also, I should also say that Anthony did a great job, Stephanie did a really-
Sure did.
She worked really hard that day.
And you did too.
Thank you.
Yes, and I thank you all too. I thought you guys did a great job. I was looking, and then I came over, and I thought it was going really well.
Oh, Crystal, you have two of her sons, is it?
Yes, your sons were helping us well, and they were very busy. It wasn't like they were on a sideline, they were very busy.
And there is another shred day in September, so hopefully we'll have that.
We have two this year? Wow, that's nice. We usually only get one, don't we?
Part of the Ohio County, we're Spanish, we're Spanish, we're Spanish.
I think we still only get one. Well, this is fantastic. I think it's a great service.
I think it was so well-received, we funded for two this time, and we also have some bags for recycling available, so for those who recycle, come in and get some, get some bags of recreation.
Great. All right, thank you all. Thanks, and I think those are all of the reports. We have no audience except for the cameraman. And then if you're going to your old business, and we have none, go to new business.
Resolution number forty-three, two thousand and fifteen, introduced by Alexander, first reading. A resolution, amending resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and fifteen, to provide for the purchase of trucks for the service department from the Street Improvement Fund.
Alexander, would you like to go in?
Right. We actually passed a resolution on April fourteenth for these trucks, but this is to change the funding of where it comes from. It's going to come out of the Street Construction Fund rather than the General Fund.
Rather than the capital fund.
Capital, so that's what this is all about. Move for suspension.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Linteen?
Yes.
Louis?
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution forty-three, two thousand and fifteen passes when you answer. Additions and correspondence, I will just indicate again what's going on in terms of correspondence. Tomorrow, the schools is having Neighbors Make a Difference Day, and it's taking place from one P.M. till eight P.M., and they're taking volunteers and donations for equipment and supplies, and the city and various employees are contributing to that effort. We have a NOKA meeting on Thursday, May, on Thursday, May fourteenth, at six-thirty P.M. at the DoubleTree Hilton, and the subject is managing healthcare costs in a changing healthcare system. And our next community conversations is June sixteen, from seven to eight-thirty P.M. And there is one more thing, Mayor, that you had mentioned, right? That was happening. Okay, planning a zoning meeting tomorrow, seven o'clock P.M., with local businessmen attending also. That is all, if there's more to add. Okay? Move to your adjournment. Thank you.
We're up by ten. We're up by fifteen.